The February 8th, 2018, meeting of the Williamsburg City Council will come to order. Mr. Trivett, would you call the roll, please?
Here.
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 We have before us the council minutes from January 8th, January 11th, and January 27th. Are there any additions, corrections to the minutes?
I'll move that they be approved as submitted.
Second.
Mr. Trivett?
Aye.
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 We have no matters of special privilege today, so that will take us to our public hearings, of which we have one. The first is a request of BSV Colonial Owner LLC to amend the special use permit and master plans for Midtown Row to redevelop the shopping center into a mixed-use development project. The properties are located at 1222 and 1234 Richmond Road in Zoned Urban Business District B3. Ms. Murphy?
Mayor Fowling and members of the city council, this is a request by the owners of the shopping center to amend this special use permit and master plan approved by city council last October for redevelopment of the shopping center into a mixed-use development project named Midtown Row. The shopping center is situated on 19.44 acres at the intersection of Richmond Road and Monticello Avenue and is currently Zoned Urban Business District B3. This overhead shows the layout of the existing shopping center with existing buildings outlined in blue. As part of the approval in October, the height limit was increased from 45 feet to not more than 66 feet, allowing five stories, and the gross floor area of any new buildings on any lot that may be devoted to multifamily use was increased to 80 percent. The approved master plan contained two options. The main difference between the options was option one contained a hotel and option two did not contain the hotel. This is an overhead of the approved master plan, option two, and I will start with this since option two is proposed to be the new option, Phase One. It contains four new five-story mixed-use buildings highlighted in light blue. However, Building Four is smaller in size and contains less residential units, 40 instead of 72, as in option one. This option contained 208 residential units with 528 beds with just under 163,000 square feet of retail restaurant space. This option did not contain the hotel and retained a larger portion of the existing Building Seven along Richmond Road, as you see highlighted in blue. It contained a two-level parking terrace outlined in brown with 239 parking spaces. The existing food line building will remain and will be refurbished along with the existing Ace Hardware building, which will be refurbished and converted into a food and entertainment use. Approval was granted to encroaching to the 10-foot side yard requirements in five areas along the western property line, outlined in red, adjoining the college and envoy nursing home, and into the 25-foot rear yard setback for driveway and parking adjacent to the community pool property. This is Phase One of the revised master plan. It contains a two-level parking terrace, excuse me, outlined in brown with 246 parking spaces and has been updated from an external ramp structure to an internal ramp structure. The central parking configuration for the plaza area, outlined in green on the overhead, has been updated to include more parking spaces and to create a more pedestrian-friendly environment. Entrances along Monticello Avenue, highlighted in orange, have been updated to accommodate turning radii and shifted to align with entrances for the shopping center across the street. Building Four has been updated to the same footprint as Phase Two, which contains 72 units. A multi-use trail is proposed along Richmond Road, and the two existing entrances along Richmond Road, highlighted in orange, have been revised to allow for proper traffic queuing resulting in more open space. A pedestrian portal, highlighted in purple, has been proposed for the corner of Monticello Avenue and Richmond Road. Building One for both phases includes a loading zone for basement access and an updated pool configuration, and Building One has been updated to include a basement which accounts for the additional square footage. Building Six has been removed from Phase One, and Building Seven has been reconfigured to include space for the Marshalls relocation. Setback encroachments have been reduced from five areas along the college and the envoy nursing home properties to two due to the parking terrace being moved further from the property line and the internal ramping of the terrace. The rear encroachment is slightly larger in the revised plan for the parking spaces in the landscape area adjacent to the community pool. This is the approved master plan, option one, with the hotel. Option One contained four new five-story mixed-use buildings totaling approximately 320,000 square feet of residential amenities space with over 60,000 square feet of new ground-floor retail restaurant space, including the larger Building Four. It contained 240 residential units, 624 beds, with approximately 128,000 square feet of retail restaurant space. This included a new 140-room hotel, which was approved at the intersection of Richmond Road and Monticello Avenue. Building Seven contained approximately 15,000 square feet, retaining Sals by Victor, the ABC Store, and a smaller retail space. Again, the existing food line and Ace Hardware buildings would remain and will be refurbished. A two-level parking structure was approved containing the 239 parking spaces, and Society Lane continues to Richmond Road, creating more of a grid pattern for the development. This is the proposed Phase Two with the hotel. Phase Two of the revised master plan will contain a new 140-room hotel at the intersection of Richmond Road and Monticello Avenue. It will contain the smaller Building Seven, and Society Lane will continue to Richmond Road. I included in my memos the charts on the buildings and parking. The applicant will meet parking and landscape open space requirements required by the zoning ordinance for both phases. I also included in my memo the comprehensive plan information and recommendations for the project. A fiscal impact analysis was performed and indicates the project will have a positive fiscal impact on the city. A traffic impact analysis was prepared by Kimley Horn and was provided with the original submittal in October. The traffic study recommended improvements to Monticello Avenue, improvements and upgrades to the existing traffic signals and associated equipment, and a second left turn lane in full with exclusive right turn lane for the eastbound approach of Monticello Avenue at the Richmond Road intersection. With the improvements, as noted in the traffic study, the anticipated future impacts are anticipated to be minimal, with operational conditions at the study area intersections expected to be maintained at levels comparable to those experienced today. As noted in the previous request, this site currently contains and consists of an outdated and underperforming 1959 shopping center on 19.38 acres with 8 percent open space. Redevelopment of the area into a new mixed-use student-oriented development project that has both commercial and residential uses will benefit not only this area of the city, but the city as a whole. The comprehensive plan recommends the planning area as a location for new student housing. It also states that locating student housing in this area has the potential to free up affordable housing in existing neighborhoods. The proposed redevelopment of the shopping center would have the potential to prevent additional houses in city neighborhoods from being converted to rentals, and for the relocation of some students in existing neighborhoods into a more vibrant area with student amenities. The zoning ordinance establishes criteria for special use permits. This project is in harmony with the adopted comprehensive plan. It is located in a zoning district that allows a mixture of office, commercial, and residential uses. It is adequately served by public services. It does not result in the destruction, loss, or damage of significant ecological, scenic, or historic features, and the proposal is designed, sighted, and landscaped to not hinder or discourage development on adjacent properties and surrounding neighborhoods. The proposal is supported by the policies and recommendations set forth in the 2013 comprehensive plan, as noted in my memo. Planning Commission held a public hearing on January 17th. Other than the applicant's attorney, no one spoke at the hearing. Planning Commission recommended the city council by a vote of 7-0 that the special use permit and master plan amendment be approved with the three conditions as outlined in my memo. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Getty, the applicant's attorney, is also present to answer any questions you may have of him.
Questions for Ms. Murphy before we open the public hearing?
I just have one. You commented about the plaza. I guess it would be on the back of Sals, and you said that it would change, increase the number of parking, but...
That's correct.
...increase pedestrian?
Yes, it's in this green area here. If you go to the original proposal, it's kind of hard to do with this. You see the difference in the pedestrian area and the amount of parking there? That's the difference in the two plans. It's being able to be converted to a more pedestrian-friendly area and an area where you can have outdoor activities and those types of things.
And possibly events, special events in that area. It's hard to overlay it in my mind, but that helps. Thanks.
Carolyn, you had mentioned that the prospects of adding these student housing apartments here could free up housing in the neighborhoods, making those houses more accessible to homeownership or affordable housing. That's just a theory.
Well, that's, I mean, that's the hope of being able to provide better units with nice amenities and places that students would like to go and live in and be able to take advantage of the shopping areas and amenities at this location.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with that. I think students will gravitate to the newest and they want proximity, and I think this is going to offer them a lot. But I just want to be clear that it's only a hope. It's only a theory that houses that are currently occupied by students will not be occupied by students in the future. Save it for the applicant.
So just to follow up on that, I guess the idea is the more supply you create, the more demand will move around to the more desirable product, and any relocation that happens are just market forces at play. It's people making their individual decision about where they want to live, and there's no intentional relocation of anybody out of any neighborhood or any particular house. It's just however, people will make those decisions. I do have two questions for you. What exactly is a pedestrian portal?
That area is an area where they're looking to provide some type of, like, entrance, like you've arrived at the area. It could include a piece of artwork, it could include signage. It'll have sidewalks and like a, possibly a plaza-type area there that sort of says you've arrived at that, at Midtown, and that'll be fleshed out a little more when this site plan comes in and gets reviewed by Planning Commission.
And does the internal ramping of the garages affect the spaces, the number of spaces?
No. The number of spaces was reduced slightly, but they have more parking than is required by the ordinance in both phases.
Okay.
On their property, not including the lease spaces from the community pool.
Thank you. With that, we will open the public hearing. Anybody who would like to address counsel on this issue, please come forward, and if you'd be kind enough to give us your name and address.
Mayor, members of council, I'm Vernon Getty of 1177 Jamestown Road. It's my pleasure to be here representing the applicant. Carolyn has done her usual thorough job of describing these changes. The driving force and the major change of substance, of course, is the relocation of Marshalls to the new Building Seven. I think we kept you all apprised that the ability to relocate Marshalls was a predicate to the entire development, and many efforts were made to move them either off-site or across the street to the Monticello Shopping Center with no success, so they have made a deal to relocate them to buildings. That led to the change in phasing and otherwise, I think, design improvements that as they've worked on it have become apparent. With that, I'll be glad to answer any questions and respectfully ask for you to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Getty.
I don't have any questions.
Have questions?
I have one question.
Please.
Okay. Mr. Getty, with the applicant, I'm looking at the staff recommendation here, and there's a lot of talk about and descriptions about student-oriented amenities, but based on last time when we were going through this approval process, you also mentioned, the applicant mentioned, young professionals kind of related cultural, you know, as well. That's not been lost today, right?
Not at all.
Okay. That's all.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Great, thank you all.
Anybody else like to address counsel? Please, Mr. Maslin.
Ted Maslin, 196 Lewis Robert Lane, Williamsburg. I just want to get on the record that I did send an email to the Planning Commission with two recommendations. One was regarding the bus stop on Richmond Road. Right now, we know we've got a bus stop about two-thirds of the way down there. The bus stops to pick up people in all traffic stops on Richmond Road. I recommended that the developer work with Williamsburg Area Transit Authority to come up with a better solution, and I introduced the developer to the executive director of WADA. The second recommendation was the city require that the developer provide charging stations for electric vehicles as part of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maslin. Anybody else? Seeing no one else coming forward, close the public hearing, come back to counsel for discussion, comment?
So, this new option one of Phase One is an improvement over previous Phase Two from a functional perspective. It is still, in my opinion, less than ideal, given the Tetris layout to go around Building Seven. Ultimately, still somewhat results in a two-sided center that we have today. I come in and out of Newtown at least twice a day, sometimes, depending on my city council's schedule, five or six times a day. One of the difficult things with coming off of Monticello into Newtown beside Panera is people backing out of parking spots, particularly, there's a lot of cars there. Traffic will at times back up onto Monticello Avenue. I could see a similar situation happening when people are making a right turn off of Monticello around the, at the intersection, at the entrance closest to corner of Monticello and Richmond. That being said, I know staff has controlled for that. Looks like there'll be two parallel spots on each side of that entrance exit and then spots as once you make it on into the development. Also, I think it's important for the public to understand, this funky layout is driven by circumstances beyond the control of the city and the developer. They're working with their existing tenant to try to accommodate them on-site. If we had it our way, this function, this development would have complete streets, clear grid structure. Can't accommodate that right now. So this is very much the result of extended compromise. I will ultimately support it, but I do wish the functionality was different. You can see that functionality in new Phase Two hotel property. That slide shows how you have a much more gridded structure, hotel on the corner, but that will hopefully happen down the road. Benny may still be alive to see that one come to fruition.
But not me.
Your words, not his.
We got the full age gamut here. I echo Scott's comments about the accommodation of the existing tenants and do feel, though, that a lot of the changes that have been made are improvements. I think the interior ramp structure for the garage provides a more appealing structure. It's nice to see the pedestrian plaza area expanded a little bit, and as a proponent of the hotel, I too hope to see Phase Two, but understand the reasoning for making Building Seven a little larger, so has my support as well.
Yeah, you know, my hesitation when we first saw this before counsel was, you know, I really wanted to see a hotel there, and I wanted to see a hotel there because I felt it would bring a certain level of economy to the other shops that will be in this, because otherwise essentially we would have a Tribe Square, and I think the shopping on the first floor would be just too dependent on, you know, the people living above it. But what that says, I think Marshalls brings a significant economy as well and will help, you know, add some spin-off business to the merchants that may be on the first floors of these buildings, and so I think I'm fine with that. I also believe that maybe Benny will be alive in 80 years to see a hotel on that corner, but I don't see it happening in the near future. So I think what we see here is good. It's nice to have these folks come to town and make this kind of investment. This is a generational change that, it's timely. The shopping center that's there doesn't meet the current, you know, lifestyle, obviously, you know, with all the vacancies there, it's not a desirable place for people to be. Adding residents there is a good thing, so I think we're on the right track.
Yeah, I just want to echo basically what my colleagues say. I concur with all the points that have been put out there so far, and also I just wanted to add, you know, this has been an extensive conversation and a dialogue that past councils have had for many, many years, and it's good to see some action finally come through with this, and I think this redevelopment, given its size and scale, will usher in hopefully greater investment in the surrounding areas as we try to address some of the other vacancies around Richmond Road and other places as well. My one thing that I had been skeptical, and I wished that were part of this proposal, was providing affordable housing for young professionals. I know there are a lot of William &amp; Mary professors and I'm sure a lot of other workforce folks out there that wish, that desire to live within the city, and, you know, it's great that this is going to be developed for student housing. I think that's going to be a big boon for our area, especially right now with the Days Inn. I guess that's a different name now, but with that dorm there and with the school of Ed there, finally there's some sort of connectivity with the Midtown for the student population as well, which I think is a big boon, but it's my desire, hopefully in a few years, maybe I'll be alive or in my lifetime, that we'll see some young professionals also express an interest in the area and find and be able to enjoy these amenities within Midtown. But I think overall, the amenities are great. The investment that we're doing to public infrastructure is extremely important, so like Mr. Pons said, I think we're on the right track.
If I could just follow up on that.
Sure, just come right in front of me.
You've got a whole list of things you want to talk about, but, you know, I too was concerned about the lack of multigenerational living in there, but I think we've satisfied that with what we just recently approved at High Street, we're adding 96 new units there. I think some of the students that live in Sterling Manor will likely come over towards Midtown Row, and so that frees up opportunities for people to live in the city that aren't just students, of all age groups and economic groups, so I think we have that opportunity.
And to jump in too, if I may, since, once I heard that half of the units were going to be one- and two-bedroom units, I think that does allow for the opportunity for young professionals more so than the four-bedroom units, so.
Paul, do you have anything?
So, Mr. Foster was talking about the somewhat unusual layout of the buildings with the very orderly section on one side and then the, kind of, everything on the diagonal on the other, and it's true that Marshalls relocation, Building Seven, I think it's Building Seven, plays a big part in that. The other thing is there's another leaseholder there who's not going anywhere, and we don't want that leaseholder to leave. But I'm, my sense from the developer is if they had their, if they were able to have their preference, all of this would be redone and put into a complete grid pattern, just as we would all like to see it, but as you pointed out, it's just not possible. So it's not just the Marshalls, it's more than that. What's encouraging to me about this, well, there are a lot of things that are encouraging, but one, from a commercial standpoint, we're retaining the most significant businesses in the shopping center and then adding more space in a more desirable setting that's going to bring more business into what's been a completely underutilized shopping center. Mr. Pons talked about this being a generational change. I've been visiting and living in Williamsburg for almost three generations now, and this shopping center has not changed much at all, so this is a real transformation. Barbie, you might know better, but...
Yeah.
This is just an incredible transformation and something that we've been striving for in the city for decades, and so it's wonderful to see it coming to fruition. It's also wonderful to have a developer who's willing to make such a substantial investment in the community. So not only are they doing all the development on this site, they've closed on the shopping center across the street and will be improving that and coordinating the relocation of some tenants and the revitalization of that shopping center as well. Additionally, they're working with us on the road improvements. They're going to be transferring some of the property to help make this possible, and they're putting in structured parking, and they're doing all of that. We don't have to do any of it. So from my standpoint, this is something we should all welcome, and it doesn't mean it couldn't be better, it doesn't mean we wouldn't like it to be better, but what we have is a whole lot better, what we have on the plan is a whole lot better than what we have now.
Right.
In particular with Food Line, it's public knowledge because we got an email with the line item in it, but it'd be a massive rehab of that store.
Yeah.
Based on the numbers that were tossed around, we may not even recognize it, so I think that's all a huge possibility.
And so what this has the potential to do to catalyze redevelopment in the entire Midtown area is significant, so the impact will be far beyond what happens on these two shopping center sites, and I know there are some people out there probably cringing going, oh no, oh no, not more growth. We're not talking about necessarily more growth, we're talking about an entire revitalization of an area that's in a prime location, perfectly located at the intersection of two major corridors in the heart of the city, and this is something that should pay dividends for generations to come. I have a motion.
I've moved that we approve, that city council approved the special use permit as recommended by Planning Commission.
Mr. Trivett?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Fowling? Aye. Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Motion passes. We have background, we have no background presentations today, so it takes us to reports, monthly financial statement. Welcome, Ms. Herron.
Thank you. I just wanted to point out two items very quickly. If you notice on page five, the room tax revenue was down 13.47, and that actually, due to some delinquencies that just came in, it's really about half of that, so it's not as bad. And also, happy to report that that 13 million bond proceeds that are held in escrow are now on the report, properly reported on page six, so.
Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
No questions.
Takes us to monthly departmental operating reports. Any questions for the city manager?
No.
Anything you want to point out, sir?
Here if you have a question.
Okay. Takes us to annual reports.
The annual reports are provided by state law to make council aware and formally report the activities of the various planning and zoning committees. No action is required. They're provided in your packet to comply with state law.
If a citizen was interested in seeing this, are they available on the website?
Yes.
So we have the Board of Zoning Appeals annual report, the Architectural Review Board annual report, and the Planning Commission annual report. Any questions on these? No. Okay, it takes us to city manager reports. Mr. Collins?
I will turn the first one over to our Public Works Director, Dan Clayton.
So the first report is the Watermill Wallashad Select Timbercut Acceptance of Bid. Welcome, Mr. Clayton.
Hi, sir. Mayor, city council members, you have before you a proposed timber sale of a 58-acre tract of land in the Wallamil Wallashad. By web background, in 1988, the city had the State Forest Department develop a plan to manage some 2,200 acres of forested land in the watershed. The plan entitled Virginia Forest Stewardship Plan was updated in 2014. This is our plan. The city decided to manage this valuable resource, which represents about 50... The city decided to manage this valuable resource, which represents about 50% of our total watershed. The benefits of forestry management include maintaining the health of the forest, providing wildlife habitat, recreational benefits, and most importantly, providing water quality benefits to our drinking water supply. Obviously, generating income is a benefit, but we wouldn't pursue this initiative if we weren't confident that it would be harmful, would not be harmful to the reservoir. And we have had a lot of experience in selling timber in the watershed in the past with no impacts to the reservoir. Having said all that, in May of 2017, we engaged a timber consultant, timber marketing and management, to conduct a cruise of the 58-acre parcel included in the forestry stewardship plan to estimate the value of the select timber to be cut. Their estimate was just under $137,000. We bid the sale and only received one bid at that time, and it was under the estimate, so we didn't move forward. We tried again a few months ago when we heard the market was better and received two favorable bids, both over the estimate. We had a bid from Sickles Logging at $138,847 and a bid from American Hardwood Industries for $161,573.05. To put you, your mind to these, the city does go the extra step in regards to ensuring the protection of the reservoir. Besides erosion control measures such as silt fences and best management practices, we maintain a 200-foot no-cut buffer along the reservoir and streams, which goes far beyond the normal timber cutting practices. The cutting will be monitored by city staff and our local state forester. Further, this is a select harvest cut where only about a third of the trees will be cut. And due to the location of the 58-acre tract, the timber operation will not be visible from Airport Road and only limited visibility from the reservoir. York County holds a copy of our forestry plan, and we have provided them a copy of the pre-harvest plan for this particular 58-acre tract, which met with their approval. So in your information for the project, there's a contract agreement for the timber sale prepared by our city attorney's office for your review and approval. So any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer.
No questions.
Just to confirm, the no-cut zone would be the green area around the sort of dash line, correct?
Yeah, you can see that on the, yeah.
And you also commented that this has been done before in the watershed, so it's nothing new and it's standard practice in federal forest and state forests as well.
Right.
And just for my confirmation, this is, as you're going out Airport Road, this is on the left side, correct?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
We've also notified the adjacent property owner, and so he's well aware of it. Actually, he's interested in selling some of his timber adjacent to our parcel, so everything's good there.
Thank you, Dan. So clearly, we want to protect the reservoir, and I heard what you've said about, you know, making sure that there's a buffer and it's a select harvest, and so it's not just a scorching of the earth, so to speak. And all those things, I think, help aid from, you know, destruction of the soil where it runs off. This company would be insured and bonded against any of that, if there is adverse damage, that there is runoff into the reservoir? I mean, and we supervise that, or is that?
Yeah, in addition to the sale price, they've also are providing a 10% performance bond. So if there's any issues that we run into and arguments or whatever, we can call the bond and fix those things.
Thank you, Dan, for your presentation. Just one quick question. After the harvesting is done, are there plans to plant more trees or more forest station?
No. With this particular thing, we're only doing a, you know, select, actually, every tree's been, every tree that's being cut's been identified with flagging and whatnot.
Right, right, right.
So you'll still have a pretty thick forest, only about a third of the trees are coming out.
Gotcha.
So there's no plans. We were going to clearcut this, yes, we'd normally replant those, but in this case, we don't need to. This will help the other trees flourish, and we may come back to you several years down the road to cut the rest of them.
If I can add just a little bit from the reading, that they leave the stumps in place also, so that prevents a lot of the soil erosion from running off. The tree species that are being selected are mature or overmature. So these are poplars and pines that have grown to their full extent and start getting into the downhill side and diseased part of their life. So that removes competition from the undergrowth in the forest, and the larger hardwood species are typically left around them, and that less competition provides for a healthier forest. That's why being part of a properly designed and implemented forest plan is important to this.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton.
We have the City Council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the American Hardwood Industries LLC for the sale of the 58-acre select timber cut in the amount of $161,573.05.
Second.
Mr. Trivitt?
Aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
This takes us to the beautification fund agreement. Mr. Collins?
Thank you. I'm going to wade into this, but I noticed Nancy Sullivan of the Williamsburg Community Foundation and Paul Gerhardt also in the audience and attendance. So if there's any questions that are more on the community foundation side, they're available if you have particular questions there. Originally, this item was presented to council at the January 8th work session. It was for the concept to establish a City of Williamsburg Beautification Fund through the Williamsburg Community Foundation. It would be a donor-advised fund, which means that the city would provide the original $10,000 in seed funding to establish the fund, but anyone could donate to the fund to achieve the goals of the fund. The goals of the fund would be to receive donations for beautification projects, which are defined in the agreement provided as bike and pedestrian paths, ball fields, landscaping, lighting, park and recreation facilities, physical structures, playgrounds, public art, signage, and other projects that enhance the visual appearance of the city and improve the quality of life for its citizens. Occasionally, council has citizens approach them about providing some either funding for a particular project, a memorial, or some beautification project. And this provides a tax-deductible means in which someone could provide that gift to the city to achieve that outcome. The city provides the recommendation to the community foundation board on the grants. So if there's particular projects the city wants to achieve within the purpose of that, we would notify the community foundation annually, and their board would approve the release of those funds for that project. The projects can be beyond the direct benefit of the city. If there was a partnership between the city and a garden club, for example, for a beautification project, that public-private partnership could be used. If the National Park Service, if we, if we knew the National Park Service wanted to do something to beautify along the Colonial Parkway within the city, we could ask them to direct funds to the National Park Service to do that work. So there's flexibility within this to partner within the community to achieve the city's And with that, the report lays out a lot of, a lot of the details about the fund and how it works. And if you have any particular questions from that review, I'd be happy to take those questions at this time. Like I said, Nancy's available as well.
Questions? Do you have questions?
Great idea.
One thing I would just like to add, that we hope we will receive citizen participation in this, and we'd certainly welcome that. It doesn't necessarily mean, though, that any project that anybody wants to fund will necessarily happen, because there's still limitations on what the city can do, especially when it comes to long-term maintenance of a project. So there would have to be a conversation or discussion that we would go through in order to determine what was feasible and what wasn't. And in the end, we're also just making a recommendation to the community foundation, and they're actually making the final decision on the award.
Based on the parameters that we've set out.
Correct, correct.
I just have one question. In terms of the quarterly administration fee by the Williamsburg Community Foundation, what is the, what are we looking in terms of costs with that?
Okay. According to their current fee structure, it's 1% of the fund or a minimum of $250. So at an initial investment of $10,000, 1% would be $100. So the city would pay, or not the city, the fund would pay an annual fee of $250 to the community foundation. Until such time, the fund collects enough funds to be above $25,000, at which point it'd be the 1% beyond that.
The fund balance can fluctuate independent of contributions. I mean, it's invested.
Right.
So it can go, it can go up and down on its own. So if it, I guess in theory, if it's all done right, whatever fee that is that's coming out of it, hopefully is coming out of the investment returns that you're earning on the corpus.
Right, right, right. Makes sense.
We have the City Council authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with the Greater Williamsburg Community Trust to establish the City of Williamsburg Beautification Fund with an initial gift of $10,000.
Second.
Mr. Trivitt seems to have departed. Who will be calling the role?
I will be.
Ms. Shelton?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pons.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
He's not going to forget where he is, because he took his name tag.
Just hope it wasn't something we said. That brings us to the next city manager report, which is the Bike Share Feasibility Study. Ms. Burke, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling and members of council. Staff has prepared a draft request for proposals for a Bike Share Facilities Plan, which has been included in your packages. The plan will establish the method to implement a Bike Share Program in the City of Williamsburg. Bike sharing model provides users with the ability to pick up a bike using a self-service station and return the bike at the same or another location within the service area. Users are charged a user fee for the bike, and the fee varies based on the user's preferences. This means that a bike user could subscribe to the service and they could lower their cost, or you could have a one-time user and they would pay a little bit of a higher cost for participating. The 2017-2018 goals, outcomes, and initiatives identify a Bike Share Program as part of the transportation initiatives. It also identifies in the transportation initiatives, improving the city's ranking in the bicycle-friendly community program. As part of the 2017 renewal, the city, that the city received, the League of American Bicyclists recommends implementing a Bike Share Program to improve our ranking from a bronze ranking to a silver ranking. The funding for our Bike Share Program was carried over in the fiscal year 2017 Capital Improvement Plan to the current year, and additional funds will be identified by this plan to implement and maintain the program for future years. The RFP identifies two phases for the project. The first phase is the development of an implementation plan, and the second phase is the development of an operations plan. The implementation plan will take into consideration existing bike-friendly facilities within the city, population centers, and community partners. Through a GIS analysis, demand, business model assessment, station locations, and factors for expansion will all be considered. The implementation report will also include system recommendations, a phasing schedule, excuse me, operating and construction cost estimates, permitting steps, timeline, and station standards. The operations plan will consider necessary maintenance and repairs needed for the stations and bikes, monitoring use patterns and maintenance, and provide for reporting, provide reporting procedures. You can see in these two images that they need to work on their operations plan a little bit at these locations. Across the state, Bike Share Programs are becoming increasingly popular, and with upgrades in technology, they've become even more user-friendly. There's now something called a Docless Program, where you just have an app on your phone and it identifies bikes similar to Uber and Lyft. And that would make it super-friendly for folks, especially on campus. The final outcome of successful Bike Share Program would encourage our residents, students, and visitors to use non-motorized transportation, and a Bike Share will allow for residents, students, residents and students to travel short distances and for our visitors to experience our city in a unique way. After receipt of response, staff will select the consultant and negotiate a contract for to complete the work. The contract would be presented to City Council to authorize execution, and the consultant would begin work within four weeks of a notice to proceed. Staff is available if you have any questions. At this time, there's no action required by the City Council.
Questions, comments?
It's exciting. I think this ties in well to the approval and construction, things ongoing at Midtown. I think as we continue to implement our downtown vibrancy plan, this will play in as well. So I think the timing's right.
And I would just like to echo what you said about seeing these in a lot of different cities. Richmond, Charlottesville, Nashville have Bike Share Programs. And with Colonial Williamsburg and the college here, it just makes sense to try and collaborate and have that synergy. And also, I think we can't fully understand the appreciation of economic impact of bicyclists because the Capitol Trail hasn't gotten all the way to Williamsburg. But if you hear people from Richmond and talk to people from Abington and other areas, biking can make a huge difference to the community and the economy. So, thank you.
The, never met a consultant that we hired that didn't come back with an affirmative, you know, report saying it's feasible. So I expect that they'll come back and say it's feasible. Do we know anything about the business model in advance of this coming in? Is there information we could have that helps us understand what would be successful or not, or what the demographics need to be?
I was just gonna say, if Mr. Collins wants to answer that, he certainly can.
That's why we need to do this. We don't want to get in, we don't want to bring the consultant in to tell us that we should do their program. We want a consultant to evaluate our community and identify the business plan and scale it appropriately for us. And that's what this is doing. This isn't the money to get bikes or put in the stations. This is to get an independent, third-party opinion of our economy and what scale we can do. For Williamsburg, off the top of our head, this, you know, we're not New York City, we're not DC, and we don't have the densities of population or that level of visitation that's going to drive something that may be able to stand on its own. So we want to, to your point, councilman, that's what we're trying to determine with this.
I don't have any other questions, but just continuing on comments. I think, you know, making sure that all the stakeholders are involved in this, in this RFP, or working with the consultant to gather information, the college. Part of the discussion, not necessarily for funding, but for understanding the demand.
Thank you for your presentation, Erin. You know, from what I can gather so far, it's kind of like a reflection point right now, is we're making headways into Midtown. We just approved that just earlier today. So we're going to put in public investment towards redoing, you know, Monticello. We also have the bike path that will extend to Newtown that will be incorporated. We applied for funding with the Birthplace of America to try to extend the Virginia Capitol Trail through. And we have consultants who have proposed ideas for what we can do to make our downtown more vibrant. So I guess with this consult, I'm just curious to ask, and we're also doing plans for Northeast Triangle. I mean, we're waiting funds from the state to see whether they'll reimburse us to move forward with our public investment plans, infrastructure plans, along that area. So I just kind of wonder, you know, are the consultants going to be able to, you know, kind of synthesize through all those plans when developing this Bike Share Program? And I guess I'm a little bit more focused on downtown vibrancy, because what we've heard from consultants are not yet ideas submitted by staff. So they're just kind of broad concepts, right? So I guess, does that in any way conflict possibly with this Bike Share Plan that might come up, or?
I think it'll actually complement the downtown vibrancy study pretty well.
Okay.
It should, and typically, most of the time when a consultant comes in, the first thing they do is ask us for copies of all of the plans that you've adopted recently. And so it should reflect the ongoing projects that we have, the new development in Midtown, certainly because this will take into consideration population centers, it'll ask for new developments where there are a higher concentration of people. So I think that'll kind of start the implementation plan itself, is to just kind of analyze our existing conditions.
Yeah, let's just, you know, I just had a minor concern with downtown vibrancy. Yet staff hasn't really moved, or I guess you have moved along with it. But we haven't seen anything in front of the council or with the public yet. I just hesitate to think that if we had some sort of big project, that, you know, it would have been anything different had the consultant report come in that would say otherwise or suggest otherwise. So that was just kind of one of my hesitations with that, but I'm glad you cleared that up. So I see that this funding... So I see that this funding line item is with our, well, this is funding from our CIP, but in terms of the actual implementation, I recall that when we were having our conversations with the Tourism Development Fund, that the bike share may fall under that. So is that something we, the city is considering when, when we're figuring, when we're trying to figure out where to place that implementation, or is this all going to be kind of within our CIP general fund budget?
I think that's fluid at this point.
Sure.
You know, the, the first thing, kind of to Councilman Pons' point, is that we need to understand if there's a feasible business plan. So there may be no cost to come up with.
Gotcha.
So it might, it's a little premature on that. The, the amount of the cost might also direct a little bit on funding, and outside entity may do this at their cost and collect revenue under a business plan. So, you know, at this point, we don't know what we don't know about it. It, it will add to the vibrancy and connectivity and mobility of our community. That's consistent with all the, the plans. It's obviously a direct plan of council and your goals, initiative, and outcome to, to finish this study. So that's, that's kind of where we are at this point. You know, the, if, if it's not a, a feasible plan, then there's not going to be a recommendation for funding.
Gotcha. Thank you.
But if, if it's over 50,000, then it would be a capital project within our capital plan. Or if it drives overnight visitation or some portion of it, then it would be eligible under council's policy for a tourism development fund. So depending on how it's implemented and what the user group is, may depend on what funding from what funds at what levels.
Right. Thank you.
So going back to Mr. Pons' point, bike sharing industry is rapidly changing. And this whole concept of the dockless bikes, where they can just be left on a street corner and then picked up by someone else, it, it creates much more flexibility, and it also has tremendous pitfalls about, is, were those pictures actually from bike shares?
Yes, both of them were from bike shares. If I can go back. The one on the bottom in the lime green color, I think, was a project in Dallas, but I think it was a very, very early phases of that project, and they've had some kinks that they've had to iron out through that. The picture above was actually, there are multiple bike share entities operating in larger cities in China, and what they have found is that when you have multiple entities operating in the same area, that people get confused on where to put their bikes, and so they end up just leaving them in places. And I actually think this, this was a collection point. I don't think that, that people were intentionally throwing their bikes into a large pile.
So in the RFP, we explicitly talk about station location. So is that setting the stage that we're not looking for the dockless bikes?
So station location is identified because that is a typical bike share item. If the plan comes back and they say, you guys are really better geared towards a dockless bike share, there will still likely be kind of gathering points or places that the company or whoever's operating the bike share would pick up and drop off bikes that would need maintenance or things like that. So you'll end up with kind of clusters of them in places, but stations are, they may be going the way of the past. We just don't know yet.
And the stations are particularly expensive?
The stations are expensive in that they can require, well, they're getting less expensive. I can, I can explain it that way. A lot of, a lot of programs are using mobile apps, and they're using things like Apple Pay and things like that to pay for bikes. So stations are becoming less expensive, and they're really kind of turning into information points. You'd see a map that would show you where other stations would be, or would have hotspots where other bikes may be available if you get to a station and there are no bikes available.
Do we know the timeframe in which the, this study would, I know it's a little ahead of the curve, but I would hope we'd plan the actual study to be done at a time when the college community is here, the students, so that they, they're, they have the potential to be a significant user.
Absolutely.
And so if we're going to reach out to all the potential end users, it, it would not be an ideal time to do it during the summer. Although, you probably need some data there too, because you get a lot of families visiting Williamsburg. So maybe just thinking about the staging of when those, the, how do we have it listed here? Whenever they have the meetings where, where they're reaching out to potential users of the system. The other thing I don't see on here is anything related to reaching out to local businesses that already offer bike rentals and get their input and just see if they have a perspective on this. I mean, I think that would be something, just even if it's just letting them know that we're looking at it, because that's potentially an important part of their business.
We could certainly add that to the RFP.
That's all I have. Anybody else?
Just to add to your point with the college and not just the administration too, hopefully there's an opportunity, maybe that's through the college administration, to actively engage with certain clubs. And I know one in William Mary's, the Bike Alliance, which they, they're a very active club on campus that promotes bicycling advocates, advocacy, and they work with the administration hand-in-hand, but hopefully will have those perspectives as well. So just to add on with the mayor's point. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Burke.
Thank you.
Our next city manager report is the Virginia Arts Festival Supplemental Funding Request for 2018 Fun Fest.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Mayor Freiling, members of council, Mr. Collins, thank you for this opportunity to give you an update on 2018 Fun House Festival and submit this request for supplemental First, I want to update you on the artist lineup. We're very happy that we were able to announce the headliners a month earlier this year than we were in the previous two seasons, 2016 and 2017. A full lineup will appear in March, as it has in the previous two seasons. So confirmed, obviously Bruce Hornsby will be curating the weekend again, and he'll perform Friday night with, with his band, and then on Saturday night, he'll perform with the Virginia Symphony as a new show in development that he's been workshopping with University of Miami and with the San Francisco Symphony. And the Wood Brothers will also perform, and they'll be on Saturday. And we're very, very happy to announce, which we've announced a few weeks ago, that Alison Kraus will be the headliner on Friday night. Alison Kraus is the all-time winner of solo Grammy Awards. She has 27 Grammy Awards. It's the worst, the, the highest in the history of the Grammys. So that's a very, very big deal for the festival and for the city. Fun House is a partnership with the city, Virginia Arts Festival, Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, and GWCTA. Our goal is to increase tourism in the shoulder season and to continue to grow Williamsburg's reputation as a destination for arts and entertainment. As in prior years, the marketing will be undertaken in collaboration with GWCTA. Last year, our out-of-market region, our out-of-region marketing included over 1,000 radio spots, 12,000 pieces of targeted direct mail, 5,000 posters and flyers, 39 print ads, and a robust digital and social media campaign. This is all of our out-of-marketing plan. We were able to track over 40 million gross impressions. As a reminder, last year, we had visitors from 29 states, and 51% of our attendees were from outside the region. Last year's festival budget was 800,000. The investment from Colonial Williamsburg Foundation and GWCTA was around $75,000. The festival invested over $200,000. And as you know, one of our biggest challenges with the festival is the cost of the infrastructure, since there isn't this-sized venue here in Williamsburg. The cost of installing the tent and lighting and sound is, is in excess of $125,000. The city has been a great partner for our first two years, and as we go into our third year, we would respectfully like to request a supplemental support of $25,000 in this year's festival, and these funds will go towards artists' fees and out-of-region marketing. With this support, the city's overall investment is still leveraged, but 10 to 1. Please know that the board and the festival are very grateful for our ongoing partnership and the city's support.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Rob.
Mr. Cross. Where's Mr. Jackson?
Right here. We're both here.
Oh, hang on. I thought perhaps you were stuck on the highway.
No, no, we made it. No, no trouble.
Questions, comments?
No, this is, this has become a marquee Williamsburg event. It's activated space that had previously been driven by and kind of shrugged at. It's now, people, people view that part of town in, in a different way. It's, it's a game changer. Two concerns I've heard in the past, food and beverage. Can you talk a little bit about what you've learned, where you're, where you're heading in that, in that direction?
Sure. Last year, with some feedback from council and from our partners, we increased the amount of partnership with local food trucks and regional food trucks, and that was very successful, so we'll do that again. And we were also able to, with our beer distributor partnership, we were able to include more local breweries. And I understand that they are also getting ready to announce another partnership with another local brewery, so I think we'll have another local brewery included this year in our beverage, our, our beer offerings. Also, Colonial Williamsburg Foundation was also one of our food partners last year, so they did a lot of the stuff that was kind of in the center of the setup and the food trucks rolling the exterior of the perimeter.
Gotcha. So when you partner with that distributor, you're tied to brands that that distributor has? You don't, you don't partner with multiple distributors?
Correct. In my experience, on these kind of events, they brought a pretty good amount of cash sponsorship to the event, and for that, they're obviously leveraging the partnerships they have with the breweries that are investing in those brands.
I too would just like to echo that this is, as Scott says, a game changer, and I think that it needs to be looked at in a couple different ways. One is not only the economic impact, but it also brings a different focus to Williamsburg. A lot of people that, I think all of us have heard say, boy, I never expected to see Williamsburg like this. And so I think we are all grateful to Virginia Arts Festival and Colonial Williamsburg for the location and, and the venue. I have heard a little bit of sort of questioning on Saturday night. I know Alison Kraus is a huge draw, and every time that someone hears that she's going to be here, oh, I got to get tickets. But they're not as enamored as of yet for Saturday night, so we look forward to some other additions to that event. And I think this is also representative of what's happening across Williamsburg with other events that are being hosted here, particularly music events that draw people. And I think we're just starting to be on the edge of getting that name recognition for performing arts festivals. So thank you for continuing to bring this here.
You're welcome. So as I mentioned, we've announced Alison for Friday night, and Bruce will headline on Saturday night. We will have another headliner that will play before Bruce on Saturday night. We, we had planned on getting out as early as we could this year, like we did in mid-February. The reason being because Alison is getting ready to announce her Mid-Atlantic tour, and we wanted our date to be on sale before some of the other dates were announced, so we could get some of those sales for people to come here as opposed to, and we don't know where the other dates will be, but we're assuming she's going to play somewhere in North Carolina, play somewhere up in the DC market. So that was successful in getting it out, and we had immediate sales and people buying the two-day package. So we know, having Bruce headline on Saturday night and her headlining Friday, we were able to kind of pull some of that early money out of the market for people that are traveling for these kind of events.
Well, I've already bought my two-day pass, and my sister is already coming from the Harrisonburg area for Friday night. However, she is leaving Saturday, and, and I'm not a huge music person, so I'm not familiar with the Woods Brothers, but look forward.
They're awesome.
Well, they just released a new album this past week. It's great timing for us. That was not, we can't take credit for that, but Paul Sherrill and WHRV has been playing it all week and previewing it and talking about Fun House Fest all week. Has he, he's been playing some cuts from the CD all week. They're definitely a band on the rise.
Yeah, Rob, thanks, thanks for bringing this opportunity to us. You know, just restate the obvious. I mean, this is cool, and this is exactly what, you know, this is adding another dimension to our, of what we are in Williamsburg, just not tricorn hats or, you know, roller coasters, but, you know, developing this, this cultural scene around music. And I think what, what we have before us today, and, you know, in conjunction with, with what Culture Fix is doing, with the Jazz Fest and Big Bluesies, I think we're, we're heading in that direction. If the city doesn't, isn't able to come up with this additional $25,000, what's the negative impact? I mean, going to cancel the whole thing?
Oh, absolutely wouldn't cancel a thing. It will impact our ability to market it out of market. You know, and the festival's committed, as is Bruce and, you know, our partner with CW, you know, we just will work harder, but it's, it's a big investment for the festival, and we're committed to it, but this obviously will, will help us be able to strengthen the out-of-market reach and also to invest in the, in the artist lineup.
Now, well, that's all the question I have for him, but just in terms of the statement, I think, you know, given, given this opportunity, this is something that, that I would look forward to supporting. But I, I don't want to do it at the risk of not having a conversation about other opportunities to fund events that are, that are before us. And so I, should we have that conversation together? I know that there's been other requests made of, of council to support their initiatives, and I want to be able to take those requests in consideration at the same time. But they're not here with us today, and so if we delay making a decision on this, I think it's, it's not, not going to hamstring the festival significantly. Perhaps we can have that conversation as the budget unfolds.
I can clarify one thing, council. This request is for FY18, the current fiscal year. Other events are requesting for FY19 funding, so that, you, you can do both. This would be funded out of FY18, and the, how do we fund? If, if there's an interest in reexamining how we fund more events in this manner, then that conversation can happen in the budget, independent of this. So I, I just wanted to, to make sure everybody was clear. This is an FY18 supplemental that would not impact the FY19 funding requests that are coming up in the budget process.
Thank you for your presentation. I've no, no question, further questions, other than the fact that someday, I noticed the other day, thanks to the vice mayor, I checked out who the, the Wood Brothers were, and on Spotify, they actually put that he's going to Williamsburg. So it's nice to see that kind of thing, and hopefully you are also experimenting with ways for that social media integration to kind of attract crowds from all generations. One of the things that I thought was great about the Fun House Festivals over the few, past few years is that you'd see a cross-section of multi-generational audiences there, whether it's folks that returned there to, to experience Bruce Hornsby back in his glorious days, and remains glorious to us, or younger folks who may have not heard of him, went to see Sherri Crowe, but ended up really liking Bruce Hornsby. So I'm really excited with the lineup so far. It's great to see the symphony orchestral also participate as well, in this endeavor as well. And in terms of the conversation, I think you raised a good point. I think that's a conversation we definitely need to have at certain points, because these special events are really activating, as the vice mayor has said, the city in ways that excites, you know, the kind of generation that we once see come through the city. I mean, whether it's retirees, professor families, younger folks, students, young entrepreneurs, I think that's, that's a great opportunity for the city to grow in that aspect. But I'm also comfortable, given that this is with FY18 from our contingency funding request, I'm also comfortable approving this request today with the confidence from city staff that we'll have that conversation, because I think there were valid points that were raised with regards to other local events, but this event is exciting. I, I think there's a compelling interest to support that funding request today. I don't know what my other colleagues think, but I'll just leave that up. Thank you.
What's the impact of going from three days to two?
We looked really carefully at the attendance for the first two years in, in terms of the revenue, and there were a very small percentage of people that were staying the third night, and we felt like investing the, the funds that we were spending on Friday and Saturday in the artist lineup would actually have a better return on investment.
And what do we see going forward with the Fun House Fest? Are we, is there any anticipation or hope that eventually the attendance would be strong enough that some of the local funding, as much local funding would not be necessary? Or do you think if, if we want this to continue, that's something the community is going to have to contribute to regularly?
Our, our goal is that, because we've had, as you know, we had really good increase from year one to year two, and our goal is that it becomes more self-sustainable as we move forward. And I just think we'd have to sit down each year with the city, and obviously we've been very transparent on the, the numbers in terms of where all the funding is coming from and all the expenses are, and see. So I would, I don't want to promise something I can't deliver down the road.
Everybody else does.
I'm not good at that.
Mr. Pons? Mr. Pons, did Mr. Collins' answer help your concern about?
Sure.
Okay.
I just have one other question. What is your sort of goal for attendance? I noticed 2016, '72, '73, 2018, '80, '80. So...
I would love to keep growing 100 or 15% per year.
That's awesome.
I think our comfort, I'm turning to our colleagues in police and fire here, I think our comfort level right now is about 5,000 in the park, about, we can get 1,800 safely under the tent and another 3,200 on the lawn. I think if we were to grow past that, we'd probably have to look if we were going to expand the footprint or put the second or third stage somewhere else. But we still have room for growth.
Thank you.
Do you anticipate any challenges with the setup this year with all of the construction work currently underway on that, right on the other side of the museum?
We've worked, we've had several meetings with the museum and Colonial Williamsburg Foundation, and everyone's assured us that we're going to be able to have plenty of room for the actual tent and everything, and they're able to keep roads open for trucks, artist buses, and transportation. So they have it in their work plan and schedule that we should be okay this year.
Great. The questions? I hear motion?
I have it pulled up. Mr. Mayor, I move that the city council approve the supplemental funding request by the Virginia Arts Festival for the 2018 Funhouse Fest event in the amount of $25,000.
Second.
Ms. Sheldon?
Mr. Zhang?
Aye.
Mr. Pons?
Aye.
Mayor Freiling?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster?
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
This takes us to the presentation of draft e-newsletter. Mr. Barham?
I want to lead off on this one. At the end of a meeting, you know, it's a good time to talk about how council wants us to talk more, talk more often, and...
Can we qualify what we meant by that?
I'm just getting warmed up.
Okay. And to whom we should be talking more?
To the public. I apologize. Not to... So one of the challenges of local government is, and probably always will be, how do we get a message out to our community about what are we achieving, what progress we're making on projects? Local government is more about providing municipal service, and we don't toot our horn in any way, but it's important for the public to understand the value of what they're receiving with their tax dollar, what their investment is returning on. And so, you know, how to meet that challenge in an ever-changing communication environment? Our media partners have different pressures on them this day on what and how much they can put out and what methods. Our community partners have similar challenges. So the city continually looks for new opportunities to communicate and to communicate better. And so one thing that council asked us to look at at the budget retreat was, is there an opportunity to get message out on projects and recent happenings in the city in a new manner? And our ever-up-for-the-challenge IT Director, Mark Barham, jumped at the opportunity, and he's going to show you an example of one way we'd like to start doing that.
Good afternoon, Mayor Freiling, members of council. I would just like to say that I was, opened my mouth and said, "Sure, we can do that." So this is draft of, the draft one of the e-newsletter, as we're calling it. I would tell you that because all this is in draft form, I have no ownership in this. I don't think anybody has necessarily ownership in this, so things can change and to whatever council would prefer. But for right now, we're calling it e-newsletter. One thing you'll notice is that it looks strikingly similar to your monthly operating reports that you see from all the departments, and that's because it's using the same platform to develop this type of newsletter. So we would anticipate using this as a mechanism to get this newsletter out, to develop it and to get it out. You'll notice across the top, first thing, pictures, we would expect that to change with the seasons, with whatever a particular topic of interest was going on within the city. This just happens to be winter. I know it's a little bit tougher to see up there, but on your monitors here, you can see that this is winter out at the park. What we've done is we've broken this newsletter up into certain, to very specific areas. The first one is what we're calling Spotlight On, and this is kind of the area that we would highlight some current activity that's going on within the city that's of interest to the general public. So the first one we chose, again, in this initial draft, was the budget retreat that we were all at. Talk a little bit about what happened at the budget retreat, kind of the pressures on the budget, where we're currently at. And then we added in some graphs, as we do with all this, we add in some charts and graphs. You'll notice here, this is revenues and expenditures related to the budget. You'll also notice that it's pretty difficult to read up there. So we've made it such that if you click on it, it'll open a new window, and then you can actually read it. So it's a little bit more interactive than just looking at it statically on a webpage, but allows you to really get in there and look at the actual chart itself without having to reach for your eyeglasses as much. So we continue on, and again, all of these, all these graphics within here are the same way. They can open up and to enlarge, so it makes it a lot easier to read. Then we go down and we talk about, again, more pressures on the budget, what you're planning to do, public safety presentations within that, and then some tax rate comparisons, again, pops up, so you can actually see the data within there. It makes it really easy to use, and it's informing the way that you would hope that this type of information would inform. And then finally, here at the end, we talk about some key dates that are going to come up within the budget process. We've highlighted those so that it's easy to see whether they're, you know, release of the budget, public hearings, adoption of the budget, what have you. And then finally, here at the end, we have a link to the actual presentation that was given at the budget retreat, so that you have all of the information, the public has all that information right at their fingertips within one webpage.
Mark, if I may add, the spotlight then becomes the major topic area, the main material that you're trying to inform the public on. It might be a little more in-depth, a little more wordy, have a little more background content, and then that leads into the next section.
So the next section, we're calling News and Highlights. These should be very familiar, as we just talked about a bike share program today, gives you a little more information on it, some imagery associated with that, so that you have a better understanding. The Beautification Fund, again, just kind of describing what action council's taken, why council's taken this action, and then some imagery that helps further explain it and give it that little bit of extra context. Here's a program that the Police Department is working on in conjunction with the Community Action Agency to collect used shoes, and they get money for that, that they can use for their partners throughout the community. Really good effort, but it's not one without something like this that the public wouldn't necessarily know about. So it's something that certainly rises to the need to have it out there in front of the public. And then also within here, we want to include kind of reminders to folks, and this is one that's of particular interest. This is the Everbridge system and how you sign up for it, what it's about, to get folks to sign up for emergency alerts within the city, and then we give you a link directly to that, so that you can go off and sign up for those emergency alerts. Then we get into community health initiatives, again, under the same umbrella of news and information. Just talks a little bit about a regional program that's currently going on, gives you a lot of information about it, who's in it, who's participating, and then what the goal of this particular program is. And then, again, more imagery to kind of give that context, sustain what it is, the idea behind the particular project. And then lastly, within here, you'll see the links to various other pieces of information. This just happens to be the Virginia Arts Festival's coffee concerts, as well as the Funhouse Fest that we just finished talking about. So the next section is project updates. And what this is, this is a map, obviously, of the city, and it has the, you can see those red dots on here, and these are various capital projects that are currently ongoing within the city. But the cool thing about this is that you can select a red dot, if I can get my finger on it, on a map, in context on the map, and then you can see what the project is. It gives you the status of the project, where we're currently at within the project. So anyone out there using this within the newsletter gets an idea of, hey, where are they at on the Monticello Avenue redesign? Here it is. And we can update this as often as we like. This is simply data that we're pulling in to this Socrata platform and then using it that way. So another one here, Second Street Underground Wiring. I know this one gets some questions, so now you can direct people to this, and they have a really good understanding and up-to-the-date understanding of where the city and Dominion in this case is at with that project. Last major section is called Coming Soon, and this is, just gives you some key dates that you might want to put on your calendar for, you know, various meetings, when the city might be closed, any types of events that are happening within the city. We bold those, the particular pieces of information, so that folks can have that. It's easily, easy to read, and it's right in front of them as well. And then lastly, we close it out with the same type of banner at the bottom of our multi-operator reports, but instead of those wonderful pictures of your department heads, it is methods by which you can connect with the city, obviously address information, telephone information, ways to email the city, and then we link up all the city's social media, e-meetings, websites, e-government and payment websites that are out there for folks to use, all of our dashboards, and then the property information site as well. And I would say that on a normal computer, one that's not being projected at such a resolution as this, this is not hyphenated. This is actually one big link, so. And with that, unless Mr. Collins has any information to pass on, I would say before, we have, we've talked about delivery mechanisms and how we get this in front of people. The thought currently is to take the, one of the four big blocks on the front page of the website, the highlight blocks, and then develop a graphic for that, such that the most current copy of the newsletter is always there. We can also include that within the body of an email and email it out via our e-notification system, allow folks to sign up for this, and then email it out such that we're not just sending out a URL, we're sending out an actual graphic that you can click on that graphic and then be taken right to the newsletter. So with that, I will hand it off to Mr. Collins, if he has anything, and if not, I'm happy to answer any questions.
And we're seeking feedback right now on ways we may improve on this, and the idea on when we send it out, if you go through all the whats, whys, the when is also there. The idea is that the week after council, we'd be able to put it out, so we're able to report out after council what was accomplished at council and provide that update at that time. So it'd be a monthly e-newsletter that was available and pushed out in every way we can, just to be as transparent as possible about where we are in projects, strategic initiatives of council and the community, council actions, upcoming events, anything that needs to get out on the public, and that'll just help our community have a go-to place to look for information and start learning more about their local government.
Great platform.
I just want to say it exceeds my expectations completely. I mean, I have always had great confidence in you, but this is amazing, as I've been an advocate for a newsletter, having seen various ones from different communities, and this is very complete and has lots of great information. And I know it's hard for the media to present everything that we cover in a city council meeting, so I think the timing that you mentioned of having it after our monthly meeting is spot on. So congratulations, and I'm so excited about it. Thank you.
I would add that this is not the Mark Barham newsletter. There's a lot of people involved in this.
Right, but just putting it all together and...
Can we get the Mark Barham newsletter, too?
It would be boring.
I would also point out, Leanne Hartman's a big, our communications specialist is a big part of this in working with departments and getting into my schedule to get this information out and get to Mark to put into the platform. So it does take a team effort, so thanks to Leanne also.
Yes, thank you, Leanne. Appreciate it.
Well, I think it's timely as well. I think in this age of transparency, it's important that, you know, we continue to do all that we do to make sure that the public has the opportunity to get information. Obviously, we can't force feed it, but, you know, we want to make sure that we're not doing anything to impede it, and I think this goes a long way, just to making it more available and then also providing information in a proactive way and giving them the opportunity to opt in, so to speak, is important, so. So you've presented a platform. Is there some malleability to this? Can you have the opportunity to maneuver it and adjust as trends change?
Absolutely.
You know, once people, you know, have an experience and they make recommendations, you'll...
Absolutely. Yeah, as Marvin indicated, we're certainly open to ideas and methods of change. This is an extremely easy platform to use and to make those types of changes. Just to kind of follow on that a little bit, I mean, there could be videos based in this. I mean, we could have, you could have the mayor giving some sort of speech or what have you.
Let's scratch the video.
Not to put that idea in anyone's head, but absolutely, we can make changes very quickly.
Good, good. Well, so I think this is good. Well, the other thing I wanted to kind of talk about, it doesn't mean, we're not having to hire a whole new department to put this out. This is something that staff can add on to everything else they do in a meaningful way without being too burdensome?
Yeah, it's a platform that we own. It's a platform that we use to generate monthly operating reports. It's an easy-to-use platforms, platform. The hardest part of this, and the hardest part with anything like this, is the content and getting that content. Getting into the platform and enabling in this fashion is extremely simple.
And you bring up content, that's a good point. Obviously, there's some oversight as to the content that goes on there, like there is with everything else that gets disseminated from the...
Definitely.
Thank you.
Thank you, Leanne.
Thank you, Mark, for your presentation. Again, like all of your presentations, very exciting stuff. It's great to see some of the interactive features that you presented today and the possibility of those ideas to be incorporated into this inaugural e-newsletter whenever that time comes. And, you know, it made me think, well, you're giving the presentation of why we have this transparency, and it's always been my belief that we are all at the, we all answer to our employers, which are the residents, the taxpayers of the city. And one part of, one aspect of that local government is for the ability of residents to provide input to us, to help us guide as we shape the city's policies. But another part of it is just informing them of what's going on with their tax dollars, and I think that's vitally important with this concept of e-newsletter. It's so simple, it's so easy. I don't know, I'm sure it takes a lot of time to put one together in terms of content, but it's incredibly important, just so that our community and our residents, our bosses, understand where we're coming from and how we're executing their policy wishes and their policy asks. So I'm really grateful to see staff, Leanne, yourself, your staff, for moving forward with this, and Marvin as well, to move for, everybody, to move forward with this idea. Just had a couple of questions. So I'm assuming then, basically your presentation with this e-newsletter, is that going to be handled through just IT?
No, sir.
Content, all of that? Just wanted to be clear.
Yes, that's handled through the city manager's office.
Gotcha. Okay. So who's going to write it? You?
Leanne and I do a lot of the writing. Different department heads do writing for their content.
Right.
With Doug mentioned, editing and oversight of what goes into the formal newsletter. We anticipate council to give direction, and we pick up on when, you know, council as a body says, "This is important to us," and so, you know, that your GIOs and the community messaging there, that feeds content as well. So it's, you know, from a day-to-day operations, that's communications, that's Leanne, Andrew Trivett, the assistant manager, who oversees communications, and then myself, and anybody else who looks like they're not busy at the... else who looks like they're not busy at the moment.
Right. Thanks for that. Second question, I know that Parks and Rec has their own newsletter that they're sending out. I don't know if other departments are planning to do that as well. I know there's been a movement where several of our departments have established their own independent Facebook pages, like the police department, Parks and Rec. I guess, is this news, how's the e-newsletter going to integrate all those other departments? Newsletters and social media and all that? Is there going to be some centralized?
So, we don't want to be duplicative necessarily, but there may be some topics that we want to make sure get out beyond different audiences. So, when you're talking about Parks and Recreation, eighty, ninety percent of their users in a given program aren't necessarily city residents, and so who's seeing that may not be your resident in the city. So, we have to be aware that different populations go to different sources and get their information in different places. The city newsletter, though, needs to be holistic to the jurisdiction as a whole.
Sure.
It can link to those newsletters, to, hey, here's an important thing from the Parks and Rec newsletter, here's the copy to the full newsletter. So, you're able to link through, when Parks and Rec puts, we put out the city one, Parks and Rec will also put out to their user groups, their subscribers, the availability of the city, so they'll post it through that social media. Department communications are part of the city communications. They're not independent silos or operate independently. Williamsburg is very codependent, if you will, within our departments. We all have, we're a very small organization, and we have to rely heavily on each other to achieve anything. So, when Parks and Rec puts out a message, or police puts out a message, there's an increasing awareness of how that impacts other aspects of the city.
Gotcha.
Thank you, though.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark.
So, Mr. Barham, is it fair to say that this is in draft form? That, I mean, is...
Yes, sir.
So, to Mr. Pond's point, that it's flexible and can change over time, just because this is what we see now, doesn't mean that it couldn't look drastically different as we get more feedback and input from people.
That's correct.
One thing that, well, it begs a question, which I'll come back to, but the one thing I wonder about, whether it's worth putting in here, is a link to, I know we have how you connect with the city of Williamsburg, but one that specifically or explicitly asks the reader if they have any suggestions on how to improve the newsletter, to please send them to us. We know what we want to tell the community. We don't necessarily know what the community wants to hear, and some, you know, most often those line up pretty well, but sometimes they don't. Sometimes the community doesn't even know many of the things we want to tell them, which is why it's important that we do so. But if we focus too much on one area or another, if somebody thinks, hey, this is something great, and I'm just using this as an example, I'm not saying we should put it in there. I'd love to see information on all the new businesses that opened in the city in the past month, and if we decided that would be a good thing to do, then something like that could be added, even though we didn't already have it. The one thing I don't see, which I guess would just be a topical inclusion as they're received, are notification of the awards that the city gets, particularly, you know, like your fabulous technological Williamsburg award, you know, and all the great work that all the different departments do.
Right.
Whether it's police, fire, library, Parks and Rec, I mean, you know, there's information all the time. So, is that something that would go in, potentially in that section, covering what happened in the meeting?
It certainly could. It could be its own section. I mean, there's plenty of awards by all the departments and recognitions of all the departments to certainly warrant its own section, but it could go wherever, wherever we thought it best fit, certainly.
For instance, might be, a new award might be up in the News and Highlights section to where, hey, we just received this, but we could add down at the bottom, and you want to have kind of that place that people know that they go to for regular information. So, if you just wanted to see the holistic link, then we can put a link there at the bottom, awards and recognitions.
And the whole point of that is to help people appreciate that the money that they entrust to us and to the city staff is being spent wisely, and really good work comes as a result of that, and it's so good, in fact, that it becomes regionally, statewide, nationally recognized. The one thing I want to come back to, though, is it's always a struggle in this type of situation, is how much information is enough, and how much information is too much information, because at some point, when we try to shoehorn too many things into it, it becomes overwhelming, and people won't go through it.
Like the Congress.
So, that's where maybe that suggestion part could help out, if we get some feedback in that regard.
Yeah, we can easily add a link out there for that.
Comments?
So, unless there's some objection, we'll put out our inaugural e-newsletter next week, and we'll solicit suggestions on how to improve it as part of that, and thank you for your comments on it.
Would that be through a link, or is that through an email to city staff on that?
So, it's going to be a lot of different methods. It's going to be on the front page of our website. Every social media in every department will put out a, any of their subscribers, our e-notify, so it'll go out, anybody who's self-selected e-notified will send it out initially, saying there's a new e-notified to select for, unless that's too far. People select what they want to be on an e-notify.
That's fine.
We'll put it out through our normal public information release, and so different media outlets and community groups receive it through that method as well, and can spread that in that manner. So, if we're missing a way that gets it out without being too intrusive, we don't want to force our way into anybody's lives, but we definitely would like people to know that there's an opportunity to self-select if they so choose.
I think it's the type of thing that a number of people would prefer to have pushed out to them, rather than them having to think, oh, it's the week after the council meeting, let me go to the city website and look this information up. They may not read it all, they may not read it every time, but...
The idea being, if someone normally goes to Facebook, and they've connected to the city, or the recreation, or the police department, then on that Facebook connection, they're going to get the city's e-newsletter notification. If it's Twitter, then it's the Twitter account. If it's the Instagram, it's Instagram. So, each, people can self-select on the platform that they want to receive information to receive this.
Ms. Hartman, Mr. Barham, thank you very much. This is a great step forward. We look forward to seeing the first edition. That's the end of our city manager reports. City attorney report?
Nothing, Dave.
Anything you want to highlight on the schedule for February of 2018, Mr. Collins?
Not at this time.
Unfinished business? Business? And that takes us to open forum. Anybody in the audience is welcome to come and speak to council on any issue of interest. We have one speaker's card. Mr. Jay Everson? Welcome, Mr. Everson.
Well, thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Sure. Oh, I forgot to say, if you could keep your comments to less than five minutes, we'd appreciate it.
Five minutes. I did it last night, it's great. I'm sorry, because I have a...
Mr. Mayor, city council members, Jay Everson, I'm in the county. I really appreciate you taking the time to listen to those on the other, more uncivilized part of our Williamsburg area. The reason I came here tonight, today, is you are, of course, having some budget issues, and the Williamsburg James City County School Board has approved $185 million with the capital expenses over the next ten years. And I know you only have to worry about the next five, but it is $185 million. I am not here to talk about the $75 million connected to capital maintenance, only for the part, which I have attached and given you, that relates to classroom expansion. Now, I know that that's $185 million, there's also some other big bills facing the school system. They have $122 million shortfall in the pension plan, that is up $12 million in two years. Last year, they had to increase their contribution by 1.9 million. And, of course, you have your other capital issues, like the fire station, et cetera. The micro situation would be, before you decide to expand any classrooms, there's two things you have to look at. How many kids are going to show up in the future? That's enrollment projections, and two, what is your current capacity? Now, in terms of the capacity issue, I am stipulating upfront that I have no objections to their current capacity numbers, that we're, I'm accepting them in their totality. I do have an issue, though, in how they do their enrollment projections. They have, for their annual budgets, they use low enrollment projections, which you see in the paper, where they have one student off, or ten, or whatever it is, but for capital costs, they've been using most likely. There's a very big difference. In this pack, what I provided you is recaps of how these projections actually pan out. So, if you go to 2010, and you say, okay, what's the enrollment going to be in 2017? You go most likely, I've got the charts, they're there. I've got the historical enrollment, going back to 2000, provided to you for the school system. You will find, in an aggregate, across the board, the low enrollment projections, in fact, over-project how many kids actually showed up. Forget about, you know, the most likely, they're just way off. You will also discover that we are really, right now, at the peak of enrollment. In the next ten years, there's going to be a grand total of like sixty more high school kids, and that's still going to be below their current capacity. And even with 177 additional kids in the elementary schools, we are still going to have 200-plus, almost 300 seats more than the kids that we're going to have. And the numbers on the middle score is horrific, because it's like 400, you know, 400 more seats than we're going to need. I am asking, I've talked to the board supervisors, I've been to the school, not the school board, I went to the planning commission of James City County yesterday, but the point I'm making here is that there is no need, at this time, for any additional classroom space. And I would ask you, because you are going to have the fund part of it, and, you know, any time you add classroom space, you have to, of course, add on operational cost, but that's, that's it, and I appreciate your consideration from somebody from out in the country.
Thank you, Mr. Everson. Would anybody else like to address council? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good afternoon. Bill Murray, 703 Goodman Street. My only comment is on the bike-sharing feasibility study that we're going to be undertaking, is that the question's going to be asked, are you for it? And the answer's always going to be yes. The question that should be asked is, are you going to use it? Because that's a different answer. When Virginia Beach, you know, talking about, they wanted to increase how far the tide, which is the train down in Norfolk, down at Virginia Beach, they asked Virginia Beach, are you all for it? Everybody said yes. As soon as they asked, are you going to use it, it was significantly different. So, everybody's for stuff until they use it, so that's...
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Well, seeing nobody else coming forward, and since we have nothing for closed session, we have no more business. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
We adjourn.
Wow. Second? Ms. Shelton?
Mr. Zhang.
Aye.
Mr. Pond's.
Aye.
Mayor Freiling.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Foster.
Aye.
Ms. Ramsey.
Aye.
Council is adjourned.